I'll order the City of Lincoln City City Council meeting, February 13th, 2012. Please roll call, please.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Eggleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norikas.
Absent, but should join us.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Henry Quant.
Here.
And Alex Ward.
Here. Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Nice to see people out in the audience. It's always fun to have company on a Monday evening. Thank you for joining us. First, next agenda item will be comments from citizens present on agenda and on agenda items. The purpose of comments from citizens is to allow citizens to present information or raise an issue regarding items not on the agenda or regarding agenda items that do not include a public hearing. A time limit of five minutes per citizen shall apply. I've asked the city recorder to utilize the light system so the speaker will be informed as to their remaining time so that we have consistency. The general rule, this is not a time for an exchange of questions. However, at the conclusion of the agenda, councillor can discuss or raise questions regarding something presented by a citizen. As you come, would you please state your name and address and speak right into the mic, please? We have one sign up, and Chris J- Jalloway?
Gotcha.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before this gentleman starts, may I ask you a quick question relative to what you just read? And I know you've probably read that verbatim and part of it. But you said, "This is not a time for question and answers."
Correct.
At what time a councillor may...
At the end of this agenda item, if one of the councillors wished to raise an issue or get clarity from Mr. Hawker perhaps...
So that would be at the end of this public comment period, the initial...
Correct. Before we move on to consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Or, you know, if it's appropriate, just ask after a certain person speaks if we could... Now would be a good time to get clarity.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Is this right, Michael?
Yes, either one, just speak right into it.
So, my name is Chris Jalloway, and my mailing address is P.O. Box 808. That's Nyatsu. Zip is 97367. What I'm here specifically to address is upcoming, is one of your agenda items, is the minutes, the minutes in particular. And in particular, we've noticed a person, Braden Criswell, who's the Vice President of Roads and Water Association, gave testimony twice in your January 9th meeting and your January 23rd meeting. And it seems as though the summary of his stuff is absent. So, on behalf of the Roads and Water District, you know, we note this absence in the minutes. And so, what I'd like to do, just real quickly, you know, I've got the January 9th minutes here, and you've got Braden's name, but you left off what his summary statement was. Okay? So, let me give you a summary of what Braden's comment was. Braden Criswell, speaking on behalf of Roads and Water District, objected to the draft amendments of LCMC 13-12-100, and stated the draft ordinance was a tortured definition of delinquency that will not withstand scrutiny. The Roads and Water District also noted the error in the draft caption. So, I tried to go take a look at your January 23rd minutes. It was four o'clock this afternoon, this is all I could find. Okay? So, I don't know if the minutes came out after that, or...
They didn't.
They did not. Okay. But I just didn't know. I looked for them, and that's all I could find. So, I'd just like to give a summary of Mr. Criswell's statement on the January 23rd meeting for everyone, since you did not have a chance to review those minutes. And that summary is this. Braden Criswell, speaking on behalf of the Roads and Water District, continued to object to your tortured definition of delinquency, and noted that the draft ordinance neither comports with legislative intent nor provides for due process. So, that's his statements. Now, if you would like, I have put together this summary of statements. You're more than welcome to take those and put those into your minutes if you need a summary of minutes. Okay? The two statements I have. So, I will leave that here. For you?
You could give those to Kathy, if you would, on your...
So, it would be nice. Councillor can do whatever. That is our version of Mr. Wells' 23rd. That's all I have.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions or comments from citizens present that didn't get the opportunity to sign in? Mr. Hawker, would it be appropriate at this time, could we get maybe an explanation on, clearly, the writing of minutes and how one captures the proceedings and for the record?
The proceedings are taped, so the full audio is available if, for any reason, anybody wants a transcript. The minutes actually should be a summary of the activities. I think it would be appropriate to mention a person's name and the main topic on which they spoke. That would be sufficient. The minutes you have in front of you are actually more detailed than that. One of the problems with more detail is that everybody then can claim that they... Each speaker should have the same amount of detail. So, usually, the way minutes resolve that is they're supposed to be a summary in some fashion to basically highlight the main matters of discussion.
Great.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on then to consent agenda. Consent agenda items. These items are considered routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any councillor may request that an item be removed for separate discussion and action. The consent agenda consists of, number one, minutes of meeting January 9th, 2012. I'm pulling the reference to minutes of meeting of January 23rd, pulling meaning being removed from tonight's agenda, because there are none. Number three on the agenda is Resolution Number 2012-03, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City, successor to the City of Taft, approving reconvenance by the City of Lincoln City by quitclaim deed of a sanitary sewer easement located on Lincoln County assessor's map, T7 South, T7S, R11W, Section 27, BD, TL 1200, and accepting a public utility sanitary sewer easement in order to accommodate relocation of a sanitary sewer line, Doug Chase, Barbara Pruitt, in-pendant executor for the State of Ted C. Pruitt Grantore. So, we have really two items under the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we pass the consent agenda items, number one and three.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second to approve consent agendas, one and three, and two having been removed altogether. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed with a nay. Hearing none. Thank you. Next item of business is a special order of business, and we have a string of appointments tonight, starting off with the Parks Committee. And councillor Ward, you took lead, as I recall, on the Parks... Or, excuse me, this is Art.
Uh, yes.
And do you have some recommendations and thoughts of this process?
Yeah, absolutely. Councillor Ellingson and myself interviewed, boy, between Parks and Arts, just a whole bunch of people. But we did have two vacancies with, I believe there's only two applicants for the Arts Committee, and would you like my recommendations now?
Let me... Is there any questions, council of either councillor Ward or Ellingson, on either... Okay. Yeah, then let's hear each of your...
Mayor Anderson, I would like to make a correction on the Arts. There actually are four vacancies, not two.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Well, we just had...
Okay. Four vacancies, two applicants. Okay?
Well, we just have two applicants. So, there's no more pending applicants, I believe, for this too. So, if anybody's interested in applying for this, there's two vacancies and two spots, no waiting. So, come on up.
All right.
So, we're doing one at a time?
Yes.
I believe the first recommendation is Del Kelvick.
Okay.
Who we had a nice chat with and seems qualified as a photographer.
All right. And that would be your recommendation for...
It would.
Okay. And councillor Ellington, are you also of the same...
Yes, I concur with Alex. Alex was in charge of me, but I just wanted to say how informative it was to be involved in the interviewing process, and how qualified, basically, all of the people were that we interviewed. And the fact that pretty soon Alex will tell you who our choices for, you know, another committee is by no means a reflection on anybody's ability, because we had some really sterling volunteers, and we appreciate it.
Well, then, if I...
The gentleman he's referring to actually has some artwork, pictures displayed in City Hall at this time.
Great. I would then, at this point, entertain a motion to have Del Kelvick appointed to the Arts Committee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to have Del Kelvick appointed to the Arts Committee. All those in favor, say aye. Can this be voice? Just a group vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And your second recommendation, each of you was Rosie...
Yeah, Rosie Huntman.
Rosie Huntman? And both of you concur same. I'd entertain a motion to have Rosie Huntman then appointed to the Arts Committee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to have Rosie Huntman appointed to the Arts Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Then the Parks Board, again councillor Ward, you were lead on this, and four vacancies and seven applicants. You did have a group to go through.
We did, indeed. And I believe there's a couple more that...
We'll see next, probably next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that are in the background process, the screening process. But firstly, I'd like to recommend Stephen Griffiths for the position.
All right.
For one of them, at least.
Yeah. And councillor Eggleton?
Yeah.
Think, Ellingson, you're saying?
And Alex may remember this also, but we... One of the applicants kind of fell out of contention, and I don't know if we needed to state that or not. We actually, one of the applicants did not interview, because we had a couple of different appointment times, and we didn't have an interview. So, that person, by virtue of that, fell out of our selection process.
So, we'd entertain then a motion, a motion to have Stephen Griffiths appointed to the Parks Committee.
So moved.
With a second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion with a second to appoint Stephen Griffiths to the Parks Department. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. And your next recommendation?
Next one, and this will probably be the, I think, the last you'll hear from me on recommendations tonight, is for Robert Scotton, who everybody around here knows as Scotty. I think he's served on the Parks Board for quite some time, and has generously offered more of his time for another round. Really interesting character, and we're really, had a lot of fun chatting with him about where he thinks the Parks should go. So, I'd like to recommend Scotty Scotton.
Okay.
Yes, I would second that motion.
All right. So, there is a motion, then, motion on the table to appoint Robert, known as Scotty Scotton, to the Parks Board. And that's councillor Ward, your motion?
Sure.
And is there a second from...
I'll second that.
And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. All right. Going to Planning Commission. Planning Commission, there was one vacancy, and we had five applicants. Councillor Sprague, your thoughts on this one? You and I were involved with all of these.
My thoughts are that we had all applicants strong. It was not an easy decision to make, but one applicant was just a little bit stronger than the other, at least I thought. And so, my recommendation is that we appoint Michael Sean Kidd. He has a strong background, and I think he would fit well on the Planning Commission.
Great. As I recall, some of his qualifications, he is actually an attorney and has land use background, and seemed very eager and interested, so...
Did he give Richard Townsend a rough time for one for his money?
Yeah, that's what we... I'd entertain a motion, then, to have Michael Sean Kidd appointed to the Planning Commission.
I so move.
And a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Thank you. And then, we have the VCC Committee. There were two vacancies and four applicants. Again, councillor Sprague, I think you were on point on that one?
I was, and so was Gordy Eggleton with me. We interviewed four people. There were two vacancies, and since the last time we were looking at all of this, one of those applicants has actually rescinded the application. So, we are now down to three for two vacancies. My recommendation is that we appoint Teresa Simmons.
Okay.
And she's in a public position. For those of you who may not know, there are three different positions on the Visitor and Convention Committee. There's a public, a lodging, and a business section, I guess you would say, a position. And there are two that serve on each of those three positions. But my recommendation is that we appoint Teresa Simmons for that public position.
And councillor Eggleton, how are you in that same recommendation mode?
Yes, I'd second that.
All right. In that case, I'd entertain a motion to have Teresa Simmons appointed to the Visitor and Convention Committee.
I so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. And then, the last seat.
The last seat that we need to fill in the lodging position, which gives us a full Visitor and Convention Committee for the first time in a heck of a long time.
All right.
That name is Terrell Rathbone, and I recommend her strongly.
Great. And councillor Eggleton, how about you as well?
Feel the same way, yes.
I would then entertain a motion to have Terrell Rathbone appointed to the Visitor and Convention Committee.
And I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Great. As my understanding, then, we still have a couple of seats on the Arts Committee, and we expect to hear next meeting the completion of the Parks Board. So, moving through with that kind of... And we can catch up other vacancies at the end of the meeting and just remind listeners. All right. Next item is ward boundary changes, redistricting from 2010. Staff report with maps and...
With maps.
Color and...
That's right.
Good evening.
We need to change our ward boundary maps, because we have found in the 2010 census that the north part of town grew faster than the rest of the city. And so, in order to do that, we need to have, select an alternative for how we want to change them, and then we will follow that up with an ordinance so that we can codify the new boundaries. The charter addresses ward boundaries, and that's where we set the idea that we're going to have representatives from each of three wards. There had been some discussion in the past that maybe we didn't, we wanted to do away with wards, and we wanted to go with at-large positions for everyone. If we want to do that, that's probably a topic for another day. We're a little bit behind on getting redistricting done after 2010 census, so we want to make sure we have that in place in case there's something that needs to be decided by ward. In our code, we also have a discussion in Section 108 about the current ward boundaries, and it prescribes the review for the boundaries, and also direct staff to prepare maps that show the boundaries. I did provide in your packets a directive from Oregon Secretary of State's office about how we need to go about choosing our boundary for wards, and I also included something from the League of Oregon Cities. I find that our guidelines that we established in 2000 really reflect what is required of us by the Secretary of State and recommended by the League. So, I think we're in pretty good shape, but that's open for discussion, of course, if you feel differently. I'm just going to run through those right now, and I'll also describe, then, how this applies to us. The first one is that the wards should contain equal population. I just alluded to that. It gives us a range of plus and minus 5% on either side of that total population divided by three, which would be the ideal. The total population as of 2010 is 7,930, and divided by three is 2,643. So, if we could manage it, we'd have that many in each ward. But the population is counted by blocks in the census, and the blocks are different shapes, different sizes, and have different populations in them. So, we have to take a look at our blocks and try to work with those. Otherwise, we are trying to extrapolate how much of the population lives in a part of a block, and that becomes pretty difficult and subjective. So, at any rate, if we took 5% of the ideal, then we would, that's 132. And if you subtract that from the ideal and then add that to the ideal, that gives the range that I was working in. And so, we're looking for population between 2,511 and 2,775. When we compare our existing boundaries to our new population, we find that Ward 1 exceeds that range. So, we can't choose to do nothing. We need to make a change. There are lots of alternatives on how to make a change, and we'll look at two later on. The second of our guidelines is that the wards should be contiguous, and to me, that means that there shouldn't be any gaps between the boundaries. Also, all the blocks in any ward touch at least one other block in that ward. So, I think we've got that covered. The third guideline is that they should be geographically compact, and in order to accomplish that, I figure we want the boundaries to be as straight as possible. So, we're not veering out of a straight line in order to capture a block. We're trying to make them... And it's not going to be perfectly straight, obviously, because we have to go around the block lines. And the blocks in the census are not necessarily a city block. A lot of times, they are, and they're bounded by streets, but they could also be bounded by the city limits or some other geographical feature. So, it doesn't always hold true that we would go down the street. We try. No ward boundaries shall be drawn for the purpose of favoring any political party, incumbent council member, or other person. So, I basically used the first three criteria when I came up with the alternatives I've proposed. And it turns out that it does, that the new ward boundaries do not divide any incumbent from his current ward. So, that was a relief for me. I don't want to be the bearer of bad news. No ward boundary shall be drawn for the purpose of diluting the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority group. Now, I said in my staff memo that I would have figured that out by tonight, but Sandy Gruber, our GIS person, didn't have a chance to get to that. So, we will have to check that. And if you choose an alternative tonight, then we only have to check one alternative. But we need to download that information from the census page, and so that has not been a factor up until now in our consideration. And we are not supposed to divide any recognized neighborhood association. We have one in town. It's the Nell Scott Neighborhood Association, and that falls south of the border between Ward 2 and 3. It really doesn't have a set boundary, but that's how we feel that it's considered here in the community. So, in other words, we don't really have to worry about that. It's in Ward 3. And county election staff should be consulted. I did call Dana Jenkins, and I talked with him about what we were doing. He sent me a precinct map. There are five precincts in our city, and we're talking about three wards. So, the boundaries didn't really jive. He said that the ideal for him would be if we had a straight line, you know, followed a street all the way across the city. And as I said before, that's probably not possible, but we did the best we could. So, there are lots of alternatives that would fall within this acceptable range. I picked two of them to show you this evening, and I'll explain as we go along why I thought these might be good choices. Option A is the provides for the most even distribution for population. So, you can see from the totals there, Ward 1, 2626; Ward 2, 2645; Ward 3, 2659. That's pretty close. In fact, I figured out the variance by subtracting each of these numbers from the ideal of 2643. And let's see here. The total variance is 35 people. The difference between the smallest ward and the largest ward is 33 people. So, it's pretty close. And we are tampering here with about 22 blocks. We're shifting those from one ward to another. Let's zoom in a little bit so you can see a little closer. The gray line here is the current ward boundary. We are showing Ward 1 in our proposals as sort of this orange color. Ward 2 is the tan color. So, the difference here would be these blocks that are between the gray line and the orange color. These are blocks that have been previously in Ward 1 that would now shift to Ward 2. And it's a fairly straight line. We start off in the west on 25th, over to the highway, drop down to 22nd, and then go east from there. This little lump here on the east end over by the lake is because we have one very long ward, and so to, we can't cut it off, and to go south, we'd have to go quite a way south in order to capture those 27 people. Now, the ward boundary between 2 and 3... Now, the ward boundary between 2 and 3 includes a shift in the blocks that are just south of City Hall, essentially, and down to 14th used to be the boundary, and we would be shifting so that everything basically south of City Hall would be going to Ward 3. Nothing happens east of the highway in this scenario. And so again, we end up with this pattern and these total population in each one. Here is a second alternative. This one has a bigger spread and a difference in population, but it has some other things that are maybe better than Option A. In this case, we have 2,600 in Ward 1, 2,594, almost the same in Ward 2. Ward 3 is quite a bit larger, 2,736, but if you'll remember, the acceptable range goes up to 2,775, so we're still good. The boundary between 1 and 2 in this case is the same as before, but we're adding one more row, essentially.
When you say same as before, same as the Option A?
Yes.
Yeah.
Except we're just taking this row and adding it to Ward 2. We're moving in this extra row south. So now, instead of 25th Street on the side, we're going to 26th. It's the same east of the highway in both options. On the south end, we are not moving all of the blocks south of City Hall to Ward 3. We'd still have quite a few that remain in Ward 2. And on the east side, we are taking a couple blocks, shifting them from Ward 2 to Ward 3. One of those blocks contains 140 people, so that really, you know, that really moves a lot of population in just one block. In this case, we're reassigning 23 census blocks, so really not, only one more than the other option. The total variance in population from our goal of 26, 43 is 185, and the population difference between the smallest ward and the largest is 187. Now, the advantage of this option over Option A is that if we're looking forward to annexing Rhodes End, that'll add another 352 people into the mix, and so by shifting more to Ward 3 at this time, we won't have to change that boundary again next time. We can accommodate those 352 in Wards 1 and 2. We'll have to do a shift at that, for that boundary. So, again, so here's the overall look of Option B and the population totals in each ward, and then I have a slide comparing the two side by side. And you can see, there isn't a lot of difference. There's this one row here that moves to Ward 2, and then down at the south end, the boundary between 2 and 3. It's a lot different, I guess, because you're involving the two blocks on the east side of the highway. So I'm looking for comments and direction from the council.
Mayor, please.
I noticed in your memo to us that, at the beginning of the memo, you indicated that this is done by resolution, and then later on, it says we have to do this by ordinance. Which way do we do this?
I caught that right before I came in, and I will, I'll do a double check on that. Where it talks about the ward boundaries in the code, I believe that will require an ordinance in order to change the code. Maybe our city attorney can tell me that for sure. She's caught by surprise, obviously.
I think it's done by ordinance, but I'll have to double check.
Yeah. We'll make sure we do the right thing for next time.
Other questions?
Counselor?
I was just going to make a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. You know, relative to the Option 2, where the, on the east side of the highway, it basically follows East Devils Lake Road.
Yes.
As a boundary. Because the factory stores, and then there's Buy Mart over there. With that population increase, it would mostly be, I think, because of the apartments that are located adjacent to the factory stores.
Yeah.
You know, and across the street from Buy Mart, along with a few houses.
Right, right.
But there's kind of a block of apartments in there. And so to that, and Mr. Mayor, I mean, in my mind, I like that cut.
The Plan B?
The Plan B, even if it weren't for the, for the possible result of Rhodes End being annexed in the future. I just think, the way the line goes now, it, oh, okay, it's like number 1.
Right.
It's like the first option, number A. So, East Devils Lake Road, I think, makes a nice boundary.
Other questions, thoughts?
I too feel that the Option 2 is the way to go, particularly in lieu of the fact that we're talking about a possible annexation of Rhodes End, and already accommodating that ahead of time, I think is great.
I would agree. That's where I'm leaning, is the Option B with the anticipation of, and I think the more things, you know, we start thinking of including Rhodes End in anticipation of the annexation. Though, as soon as I say that, it doesn't appear that it takes a great deal of work to change the boundaries, other than it would be confusing to people along new boundaries. And I would say that's probably the, an important piece here, is to keep people constant as long as you can and used to voting in a ward.
That's what I was thinking, that we would hate to shift their place for vote. Well, I guess it's all by mail, so maybe that's not as big a deal as it might have been, but it still makes a difference in terms of whom they might be voting for.
Yes.
To answer that question, you changed the wards by ordinance.
By ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll do that. Any observations or thoughts, concerns? So assuming we're, you know, leaning towards Option B, you would be checking the population, any kind of ethnic populations to make sure that's not impacted by any of these cuts, correct?
Right. I will do that between now and when I prepare the ordinance.
And then the next step would be, we'd actually see an ordinance come back to put these boundaries in place?
Yes.
Is that, that would be the step? Okay.
Certainly. I'm sorry, I'm not at my place.
Yeah.
There. When you, when you check for ethnicity, is it compared to what we have now, or is it compared to an ideal distribution of ethnicity?
Well, the idea about ethnicity and also race is that if we were trying to deprive a group of power, we might lump them all in one ward so that they couldn't influence other wards, or we might divide them as much as possible so that they wouldn't have a large enough voting block to make an impact in any ward. I don't know that either one of those things is true, and so we'll just have to take a look at it and see if it looks like we're causing a problem. And so that's, yeah, I mean, it could go either way. It is a tough question. But if, I'm hoping that it appears that it's not significantly different from our previous ward boundaries.
Where people are living.
In that respect.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do we then, this evening, give Debbie directions to go ahead with an option? So do we need to vote on an option, or how do we do that?
I would think at this point, it's not necessarily a motion, because we'll motion on the ordinance, but, you know, kind of consensus, and so far, I've heard nothing but Option B. So that would be the message that I would see Debbie taking back and drawing an ordinance around. Is that consensus of counselors?
Yeah, you bet.
Yes.
Obviously, that's not solid until you have an ordinance before you and make a decision, but this also gives the public an opportunity to spot something that we may have missed.
Correct. And I think, unlike other maybe hotly contested boundary discussions, there's no party issues here with our wards, because city issues are nonpartisan. I like the idea of trying to make the lines, boundary lines, as simple as possible and as straight as possible, and it seems you've done that, and then the uniformity. I'm amazed at how you can make the blocks work with a small range of, you know, it stands out a little more. In your memo, you also had, didn't I see the, how it would play out after annexation? Because they really fall in line.
It turns out really well.
Right.
We divided 352 by Ward 1 and 2.
It gets, yeah. So you'd move one boundary, and then things really fall in quite close.
Three of them would be very close at that point.
I would also like to mention that we're trying to, we're trying very hard to shave our general fund budget just a little bit. We had budgeted to have Portland State do this for us, like they did last time, and I saw the results of that, and I have seen the results of this tonight and in the packet. And I think we've done as good or better job than we would have, this isn't, I'm not taking this against Portland State. I'm making this a positive towards our planning department being able to do that.
And it was easy reading, because with the, I assumed those were the body counts in each of the blocks that you were moving around.
Yes.
And so as I was reviewing it, it was, played, played well, so, nice job.
Sandy did a nice job on the maps.
It helps.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from council? All right.
Thanks.
All right, our next order of business is city manager reports and...
You have a memorandum in your materials from me that was a follow-up from your discussion, I think that might have started last August. And this was a question about the role of the Visitor and Convention Committee and the Visitor and Convention Bureau. And your direction to me was to look back at the charter in our ordinances and take a look at what the code says to try to confirm whether or not there were some issues there. Chris Thomas, I know, had done some work on this. I've summarized his work to the extent, I guess I agreed with his analysis. I didn't agree with everything, but we concurred in a lot of it. And I think the issue probably came up way back when, I'm guessing, I wouldn't know without doing additional research, that the charter and the code, because they were adopted at different times, the provision in the charter about the committee might have anticipated that the VCB would come into existence, but how the interplay of all that would work with the city manager, I think, kind of dropped off the table, with the result that you have a charter provision that clearly outlines the authority of the city manager, and that would take precedence over the code. And I think that's the, the source of the issue was in Chapter 2, Title 2. And I believe that that can be fairly easily remedied. Of course, the devil is in the details and the words that you choose to talk about who has authority. I was left with the, sort of, the, I guess to summarize it, I would say that the VCC, like just about all your other committees, really plays an advisory role. It doesn't have a direct authority role over the VCB, because that direct authority flows from the council to the city manager to the VCB. To the extent the code says or refers to anything else going through the VCC, I don't think that could be as supported unless you actually changed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
There is?
Just a comment right there. Initially, the VCC was formed and did the work that the VCB does now.
Right.
And I think a lot of times, that's lost in the translation somewhere along the way.
Right.
And so the VCC has taken on a different role entirely, and I think that's where the rub kind of is.
Well, what actually happens, and what is supposed to happen according to the charter, somehow is not quite the way it reads in the code, and so I think the code should be amended, is the bottom line. If you agree with that, then I would bring back a draft ordinance amendment.
Yeah, that's how I read it too, Councilor Sprague, that, you know, things hadn't caught up, and that in fact, we needed to go back and, you know, stand with the charter and make the other things match to that. I guess the question, and we would have, when would be the appropriate time to talk about some of the, you know, I guess clarifying roles of VCC, a new committee called VCC? Because I was, I guess, a little bit confused as to why there's a need today for the VCC in this new proposed role, other than to make recommendation to council on grants?
That's a good question.
And, you know, so that, before, as we start drafting, I guess we might as well, I'm thinking, let's get it all out on the board, just to say another committee.
Right.
When you don't need one.
Yeah. I think the way I'd like to have you answer that question is to give you kind of a list of potential roles that they could fill.
Okay.
And maybe even a recommendation of which ones that would be most beneficial, but a list, a broader list of those that they could do.
Okay.
And then let you kind of like check, we'd like them to do this, this, and this, keeping in mind that if you can narrow the role fairly specifically, I think you're going to get better results. I would agree.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I would suggest, if possible, that when we finally have a lot of this stuff put together, that we have a workshop on this, because I don't see that as something that we can actually accomplish during a council meeting. I think it's a deeper subject than that.
Well, some of it perhaps could come out. We are having a workshop in March.
Yeah, I think you're going to gain a lot of information at that point, and after that, I honestly think you'll be able to, I mean, look at the roles of some of the other committees, and this one, and look at some alternatives, and I think you'll be able to make that choice pretty easy.
I can also make some very specific recommendations of things I think could, should come out right off, right off the top, and those are the provisions that say, for instance, you can enter into agreements, you can enter into contracts, you can do all these things. That's really not a role of a committee. It may advise the VCB about entering into contracts, but again, your contracting authority is council, and you delegate some of that authority to the city manager. I don't think it goes to any of the committees, as far as I'm aware.
I want to amplify what Roger said, too, is that this happened because there was not a department of the city, that the city was not capable, that the transit room tax was passed, the tax was coming in, there were funds to spend. The city didn't have a department, it wasn't capable of dealing with that, and so it skirted around the charter, out of practicality. And that's no longer the case.
Right. And, you know, we may not have an answer, but I always find it interesting when, you know, we can go back with somebody else's analysis, as we did here, 2003, when the then-city attorney, but it seemed like no action then was taken. Some work must have been done, because the suggestions then were to make some changes.
It was discussed then, and it was put into the stack of when we can get to it.
I see.
And there's been a lot of interventions between now, between then and now.
I don't...
It bubbles to the top at various times and gets more attention when need be, so...
Okay.
But that is why I threw in a little bit at the end of that memo, just for comparison purposes, the powers and duties of those other committees and how they advise. So it doesn't mean that they're any more right, some of them are more recent. Whatever you want me to come back with, that will be helpful. I'd be happy to provide.
So I would, what I'm hearing is the next steps would be perhaps a memo... So, I would, what I'm hearing is the next steps would be perhaps a memo from staff, kind of with some suggestions to think about what a new revised VCC committee could do, and if we could get there, then that would offer direction to the new ordinances, to giving, to mashing the ordinances with the, or the codes with the charter? Or is, or is there an interim step that...
Well, I think Councilor Sprague is suggesting more, and what I was suggesting is I could come back and clearly identify, I believe, those things that are a conflict and maybe should be deleted or removed entirely, and then, just so you don't, they almost don't need to be on the table, because I think they're pretty obvious, but, but people may disagree with that. And then try to boil it down to those authority issues, I think, are the ones that, that you would want to discuss and determine that.
I think we can do this at once.
Well, I'm trying to get, yeah, one session, one council meeting, so, you know, rather than...
I would suggest doing this right after our workshop, and you'll, you'll all be up to speed on issues and...
Yeah, that, that would be good.
Efficiency, as suggested.
So probably the direction to council is, now you have this information, kind of confirm, confirm for you what you, we thought and, you know, suspected, but now, you know, think of the next level, the next step, what you'd want VCC, and make some notes, and, you know, then you'll get educated further on the, at the workshop, and then offer direction. Okay? Any, any questions or...
I just think we need to align the purpose of the committee with the charter to make sure that, that we're in conform, uh, conformant.
We will.
We will.
That's, that's the first step, and then after that, I think we need to look at it, are there other things that the committee needs to be doing?
Yep, I think go all, all together and get it, yep. Okay? Moving on then to, next is Schooner Creek Transmission.
March something, rather. While Lila comes up, you're all aware that, that we've had some pretty sizable problems on our Schooner Creek Transmission Main, mostly due to the failure on Schooner Creek Road, but currently the scouring on Schooner Creek, and this, this isn't a real big issue, but since I did not see a real long agenda tonight, I thought maybe this is a good opportunity to update everybody on that main and what we're, what we continue to do to protect that, so, Lila, you need a PowerPoint?
Yes. Deborah's helping me out there. Okay, this is, I'm going to focus on a valve that we just put in on the seventh, February 7th, and it shows what our crews did out there, it's a really important valve because of the crossing on Schooner Creek, we have had continued erosion in the creek bed, exposing our, our water line there, and it, it actually exasperated with this last storm, a little bit more, but it's, we've looked at the asbils of that line, and it's, it doesn't look like it's going to, to go anywhere without probably a big boulder or trees. And so, you see the water plant here, and this is our new 16-inch line coming in to the plant, this is our 24, and that creek crossing, and our valves to isolate this 24 are on the opposite side of the creek, and that is why we put in the valve on, on the other side, and so we have, actually, these are the valves here, and then we also have valves up at the intersection of Southeast 48th and Schooner Creek Road, and in emergency, that's where we would stop first to start turning down those valves. So what we did was install a valve, see if I can get my little pointer here. We installed the new valve right here, and it's next to the, there's a six-inch line and then the 24-inch transmission main. And that's a, look at it without the background. And this is what the butterfly, 24-inch butterfly valve in place, this is a engineering schematic, and this was approved by our city engineer. And this is the actual valve itself. So to go back to, we received three bids from contractors to do the excavation, because we needed a large piece of equipment to do that, and that was $2,400, and then we purchased the valve itself, which was $3,500, and we had in-stock restraints and sleeves, and then we had approximately about $1,500 in man, city man hours, so outside cost were the $5,900, and then the parts that we had on hand, which were the sleeves here. And so you can see where they've excavated and are down to that 24-inch line. And we also purchased this saw, which we, we will use on many other projects, we actually used it last Friday on East Devils Lake Road, and it's, it creates a lot of efficiency, they were able to do a job in about three hours that would normally take them all day. And so you can see them sawing into the, the pipe to allow that water to escape after they turn the, the valves off. And then this is a little bit more of that, and then you can see in the back here their sump line, so that they can, once that water comes out, then they'll pump it out of the ditch. And you can see where they've cut the line out, and the, and the pipe was in very good condition, it didn't have a lot of buildup in it at all. And then you can see the six-inch on the ground here as well, right in this section. And these are the sleeves that they put on the pipe with the mechanical joints. And then they've lowered that valve into place, and then they pull those, the sleeves over that section of it. And then, I believe Dave Shibe was probably under that, that pipe, tightening all of those bolts underneath the pipe. So it was, it was quite an operation, they actually finished it in one day, they did the excavation the week before, and then on February 7th, they put this in place.
We did have eight customers on Schooner Creek up above the plant, out of water, we notified them, I think in the prior week, or at least five, at least five days.
At least.
Early that, that would happen, there was no way around it, at least they had prep time.
Okay, and now we can isolate that Schooner Creek line, if anything happens on that side, either at the creek or anywhere else, we can switch over to our 16-inch line.
Previously, we weren't able to do that, Lila?
Well, if we would have been able, we had a plan to be able to cut and cap this line if we needed to, but it would probably, it would take time to do that, I mean, we'd have enough time to do it, but this is, is a much more efficient way, safer way to do that.
Well, just out of curiosity, the, the valve is then buried and stuff, but is it, is it a hole, or how does one get to shutting off the valve? Do you excavate?
The valve, well, we're going to actually put in a concrete pad on top of the ground with the valve, and so we have a...
There's a valve box, it sits up on top of that, and they lower a wrench down into the top of the valve.
So you can see the valve here, and so it'll be piped up to grade.
Gotcha.
And then they'll be able to turn it off. And so they have the pipe wrapped and re-burrying that, and I don't have that finished picture because they were still finishing up the closing.
You were saying that, that that pipe was in remarkably good condition, how old is it?
It was put there in 1982.
Yeah, it, it has cathartic protection on it.
Yes, it does.
And that's why it's just almost, only, it's only a few years old in real time.
Yeah, the pipe in the slide section further up Schooner Creek, that pipe was in, in fairly good condition as well, so...
That's good news.
It just adds a little more security to our system, and another improvement, when we can budget for it, which will be a little more expensive, will be a, a backflow valve in the line upstream, probably at the highway and High School Drive, so that if any section of the line would fail, right now, if this 24-inch fails, we'll get an alarm, personnel will respond and begin to shut a valve. Now, that time period, during that time period, we'll be draining our tanks pretty significantly, and so the quicker they can get it shut off, the better. A check valve at the right location would prevent that from happening, and so we would like to budget for that, again, we're under a challenge of a couple of years now with this, the Drift Creek project that we advanced, so I don't see it happening for another year or so, but that'll be the next issue to add security to the system.
And another thing that we did with this particular valve, we were checking on the mechanical or the remote possibility of having that in our system, so that we could remotely turn that valve and not have to be out there physically, which would give us enough time to change it up, and so, so that's actually in place too, but it's also more expensive, but in the future, we could do that.
Much like the wastewater pumps then that are around, is that what you're talking about, speaking to a main?
Right, right, it would be, be able to use telemetry to...
You, you may recall when we did the grand opening of the Drift Creek diversion structure, that the, the main valve there was electrically operated, they can operate that from the plant.
Okay.
So eventually it would be nice to have all of our real big valves like that, the 24-inch valves, electrically operated.
Well, this is helpful, thank you for sharing the, the information, I think gives everybody a better idea of what you're talking about when you, you do either write us staff reports or see...
Yeah, that visual helps a little.
Yeah, it does. Any, any questions of council? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, the, the next item is just simply an announcement, we've posted the budget schedule on, in the packet, and the first, the budget materials will be delivered to the budget committee on or before April 24th, that's a Tuesday, the first scheduled meeting of the budget committee is April 30th, second meeting, May 7th, we, we'll go from there, but that, those are the key dates that, that people should be looking at their calendar for.
Great.
And then, transit room tax update, we have fourth quarter 2011 information in now, and, well, it's, it's still a little preliminary, because we still have a couple of delinquencies on it, but, let me see. October was 5.2% less than the previous October, October 2010, November was 3.1% higher than November of 2010, and December was 9.6% higher. Overall, that's about a 1% increase. Again, that's, that's really our slow time of year, and so I don't know, I put a whole lot of stock in that, at least it's not going down more. We did have some, some good weather, and as I recall, in December, and that probably as much as anything else accounts for the 9% increase. So I've been looking at an indicator, there's a broader indicator of, of economic activity in the community, and believe it or not, to me, that's trash collection, that, because every bit of, almost all the purchases of goods involve some trash, the amount of lodging produces trash, et cetera, and I'm just going to have, if you could pass this down, just have a graph there, and, and you might just take that with you. It's, it's definitely flattened out the downward curve that we, that we've had, and a slight, slight upturn, and this is through December, I'll have January shortly. So that's a 12-month moving average of wood waste is the, is the dark blue, recycling is the green, and trash, garbage is the, is the red. And again, if you look at that line, we had a long, long decline from the peak in '07, '08, and now that's flattened and a little slight upturn at the end, so we're going to keep an eye on that. I have just a couple more announcements. You'll recall that we made a series, some serious comments about the parks, state parks, Division 16 rules, and I believe those comments and those of others, particularly those in Lincoln City, made a sizable difference, and we have a new set of rules that have come out, they're available through the state parks website, or we can provide a red line and the proposed rules to anybody that requests it. The hearing schedule, there's three public hearings on this statewide, there is one here in Lincoln City, at our request and offer, on February 22nd, at 6 o'clock PM in this, in this room, and I, I want to remind everybody, if they're not familiar with it, that if you wish to comment during the public hearing, you must register with a hearing officer in the first 30 minutes of the hearing. And you can also comment in writing on the rules, and we can provide that information, again, it's in the pack, oh, it's not in the packet, we can provide that information to anybody that wants it, or I could read it out here, but I don't think anybody will write it down. So anyway, I think they're a major improvement in what we saw before, there's still some comments that we'd like to make, but it's, it's definitely a major improvement from what was proposed.
Strucker, just for clarity, I'm remembering from that that the written comment period is after this public meeting, so in essence, someone could come to this public meeting on the 22nd and still make written comments, as I recall, it's up to the 29th of February, it's the last page.
I think that's correct, yes.
So, so it, it wouldn't hurt to be in attendance, listen to comments, and then, if not able to speak at this meeting, you could still write.
One of our residents and one of our business owners was at the Division 21 rules in Newport, which is a related set of parks rules, in some, in some respects, they're overlapping, and he said that the hearing there was not what you would normally expect in a hearing, that somebody walked around the room with a tape recorder and took comments. I'm hoping we have a good turnout here and a little more official type hearing, but it is what it is.
Good.
And...
Mr. Hawker, before you leave that.
Yes.
Were you ever informed as to what prompted these rule changes?
Oh, well, I think we had something to do with it, and...
No, I don't mean the, the positive rule changes, I mean the initial...
No, just came out of the blue, just came out of the blue, I think without any public comment. They saw issues, they saw problems, meaning state parks, and proposed a set of rules with very little public notice time, and I think we caught it three days before the deadline, and they readily admitted that they were premature, they made a mistake, and they were willing to try to correct that, and I think to a large extent, they have.
And the issues that prompted them to revise the rules?
From the first set or from the second set?
First.
I don't want to speak for them.
Okay.
Okay, I, I, to be honest with you, I don't know.
One of them was the requirements for having to obtain a permit, and how many people would be involved to trigger that.
Well, this, the new set actually has a number in it.
Yeah, I mean, they proposed initially a...
A large, a large number was their quote "large number," pretty ambiguous.
There were a few things.
Any other?
Um, just that the county commissioners have asked for a joint session that they do every year, they venture up north, and they have given three dates, possible dates for a joint meeting. meeting. Those usually don't take very long, an hour, hour and a half, July 11th, July 18th, and July 25th. Could we pick one of those tonight, if possible? Is that what they're looking for, Kathy?
July 11th, 18th, 25th, those are all Wednesdays?
And I think it's at 6:00 or is it at 5:00? 6:00, okay. Yeah, it says in the letter here, we begin at 6:00 PM and continue to no later than 7:00 PM.
I like those county commissioners. Start on time, end on time. No later than. Are there any conflicts in July? I think those are all rainy days anyway, 11th, 18th, and 25th, so.
18th works better for me, I think.
Any issues with anybody that they can see?
No.
Let's go with the 18th, if we could.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thank you.
We'll inform them, and then you might start begin thinking about agenda items that you'd like to see discussed, because they'll want that, but they won't want that till, what, June?
Yes.
Okay.
Up to June.
Another question.
One more question, Mr. Hawker, going back to that trash collection graph. The blue line is very thick. Do I read the top of that line, blue line, or the bottom of that blue line for?
The width of it.
And, so the width.
What I've done here is, yeah, maybe this isn't obvious. If you just look at the red line, the red bar, look at the top of the red bars.
Yes.
Okay, that is in fact, and just erase mentally, or erase the green and the blue.
Okay.
Okay, the red line, the black line at the top of the red. Is the 12-month moving average of garbage collection, just by itself, okay?
Yes.
Now, if I would take that red away, of course, the green will fly down to the bottom of the page, and you'll see its width will vary, and the wider that line is, and you can see recycling, it started off on the left-hand side of your graph, a fairly thin line.
Yes.
But as it came up into 2007 and '08, it widened out, and it's still wide. So recycling did not fall off.
Even though it dips into the.
It only dips because of the red line dips.
Okay.
Because it's just stacked on top of it.
All right.
Okay, I could have done three separate graphs, but this gives us a total at the top. Now, on the blue line, you'll see it thickened way up in 2007 and '08, and that's wood waste.
Yes.
Then it thinned back down again, and that makes sense because of construction tapering off.
Right.
So again, I could do this in three graphs, so what you're really doing there is looking at the total of the three, but you're also looking at the thickness of the bars of them individually.
Right. Thank you.
Uh-huh. That's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Any questions of council, of either city attorney or Mr. Hawker? Okay. Then at this time, this would be the time for additional comments from citizens present. Any comments? All right, seeing none. Then how about comments from city councilors as we wind down the evening? Councilor Ward, nice to see you.
Nice to see you too, and it was nice to hear your state-of-the-city address.
Thank you.
On Friday. I kind of like to point out that, as we discovered tonight, that Ward 1 actually has 200 more voters. So 17% of voter turnout in Ward 1 is actually.
Well, let me correct you on that, we could get staff to come up again, but it was population, she was alluding to, I alluded to registered voters or those who could be registered voters who chose not to.
Thank you for clarifying yet again.
So it was, it was great to have you, you know, garner, as I said, 60%, however, with more participation, we, that's what I'm always looking for, more participation.
I'm just giving you a bit of.
I know you are.
I'll mention too that the, that the text of the mayor's address is on the website, I believe.
Not yet.
It's not yet?
There's a link on there right now.
That's last year's, I checked.
That was last year? Yeah, that's last year's.
It's not on yet, but it hopefully will be tomorrow.
Okay. And then, are we doing anything, do you know, with the video? We putting that, we'll put that on Channel 4 unless the mayor doesn't want it on Channel 4.
Well, I'd probably have to review it and edit, airbrush it. Any other comments, counselor?
No, that's.
All right. Counselor Eggleton? Ellingson? Why do I always look at you and say Eggleton?
I was just going to say, Alex has got a bit of a thin skin.
Yeah, I know, he's, well. That's why we have him sitting next to you.
Yeah, I'm the thinnest, but he's.
No comments, sir?
No, thank you, but thank you very much.
Counselor Norikis, thanks for coming back. You know, we rushed this one through, you know, trying to save you some time, but thanks for, Counselor Sprague?
Just one thing, and that is that Mr. Norikis probably encountered this if he came down Highway 18, that because of that slide they had, they've had to narrow it to one lane and then have as long as 20-minute stops, is the last I heard. So in order to avoid that, you can go around North Bank Road and avoid it.
I didn't run into any problems, sir.
Is it open again then?
I believe so.
Oh, good, okay. They said they were only going to close it during daytime, I mean, normal daytime work hours. There's a little bit of a slide two miles east of the junction of 101 and 18. It's just a little past the North Bank Road turnoff, a little bit east of that.
Okay. So we're open for business, it's okay to come down 18 and stay.
Roger would know, he's the guy that drives 25,000 or 30,000 miles a year.
Counselor Eggleton, what have you tonight?
Since Burger King is in Ward 2, I've gotten complaints before about the, all the smoke that comes up and out of there, and I talked with you, the mayor, and the city manager over it, and you've corresponded with Burger King and got a call today from somebody that lives up behind Burger King saying that it appears the problem has been taken care of. So I'd like to thank you, the mayor, and the city manager, and also Burger King for taking care of it.
Oh, that's great. That's good news.
Yeah.
Do we know for a fact that it's taken care of? I hope so, we're going, I'm going to double check on that, but I looked out there today, and unless people weren't ordering, it sure looked a lot better to me.
I'm hoping. Thank you, thanks for sharing that, it's always nice to hear good things, and quick response by, you know, in this case, the business to help, so it's appreciated. Counselor Quan, what's up?
Nothing.
All right. I do have a couple of things. One, I, in my trolling and reading, I noted in a, this is America, a Lincoln City hotel has been recognized as one of America's most romantic hotels recently. This is by the TripAdvisor Survey, which is millions of reviewers by users, and this is actually, the Starfish Manor came up number two out of the top 10 in the country as America's most romantic. And that seemed so very appropriate on, I'll remind all you that tomorrow is Valentine's Day, and there's still time. I mean, not to worry, you know, there's still time. Also, reminding councilors, our work session is February 21st, 10:00 AM in this room on Watershed. There's been an alert put out that the high possibility of the Nell Scott Reef Big Wave Contest this weekend, so the waves must be up. And let's say reminder of Valentine's Day, and then we're still and always looking for committee folks. I know Budget Committee is still looking for folks and kind of peruse the website for where we have vacancies, though they're slim. With that, I can't think of anything else. You know, I hate to leave us, it's only, you know, 20 after 7:00.
I don't.
But I will adjourn. Thank you.
I don't want to.
You know.